Hello everybody, Mitzi Dela Cruz here, host of Lincoln Live. Today, I am so excited to be live with Jason Price. Jason is very involved in our community, great, great guy, and is actually running for school board. So, super excited to hear from him and introduce you to him as well. So, first of all, Jason, thank you so much for joining us.
Absolutely, thanks for having me.
And can you start off by telling us a little bit about yourself?
Well, let me see, we, the family and I have lived here since 2008, and we've got four kids. You hear me say a lot, I've put four kids through the Western Placer Unified School District. So, three are in college right now at Chico State. I've been for awhile, and that's actually where my wife and I met. And then, we moved out to Lincoln, really because we needed a bigger house. We blended, you know the story, like you blend a family, now it's like two kids become four kids. And she said something about how they all need their own space, or something like that, you know. And so, we ended up here when this was all relatively new, and Foscat Ranch was like a brand new school. So, we moved out here because, frankly, because we could afford it.
Sure.
And I've loved to see it sort of develop around us since then. It's been fun.
Yeah, and you guys, this backyard, I have to just tell you really quick, it's just such a pleasure to be back here. It's so beautiful, and so, I know you guys that are watching are like, "Oh, it's a pool." Very, very nice and refreshing on a hot day, I'll tell you that.
And the sky cleared up, so that's pretty exciting too. Could've gone either way.
Oh, perfect, yeah, so perfect. So, okay, so you put four kids through Western Placer.
Yeah.
And, so, all of your kids graduated from Lincoln High except for the
Yeah, my senior.
Yep. So, how has that been, just kind of in the current climate that we've all been navigating?
What do you mean? So, it's not great. I mean, we're buying the three college kids Zoom University t-shirts, you know, trying to make light of it, but, you know, I think all of us are frustrated that things are the way they are. My senior is, she's doing the remote stuff, October 6th, I believe, the school district's going to bring back some in-person learning. She's, you know, going to take part in that, but, you know, it's hard. I mean, everybody's just trying to get through it, and, you know, for the most part, I think that, so it's interesting, but I, my background is in technology, and I lead a technology company that positions products like Zoom, and WebEx, and Adobe Connect, and all those other types of platforms. And we've been trying to teach corporations now to use more distance learning, and distance meeting, and distance, all that stuff, for decades. And, I feel so bad for our teachers, because it was literally like, "Oh, by the way, just do all this, like through a screen, you'll be fine, you'll figure it out." And I actually know how hard it is to adapt, as an instructor, to teaching remote and so forth. So, I have so much admiration for the teachers that are trying to figure this out day by day. It's unreal how much they're innovating. I'm seeing more innovation from schoolteachers than I've seen in businesses for dozens of years. It's really impressive to me.
It is, it really is, and I know, it can be really frustrating for the parents and for the kids alike, but, you know, again, nobody could see this coming, and so, yeah, the teachers are doing a phenomenal job, and hats off to all of you teachers and administrators that are watching as well.
For sure.
So, I guess, let's just jump into the big question here.
Yeah.
So, why would you, on top of everything else that you manage, run for school board?
Well, so you and I have worked together on community projects.
Yes.
I'm a huge fan of our community, a huge fan of our town, and I've looked for different places where I might be helpful. I'm on the Economic Development Committee, I steer the Leadership Lincoln Committee, I don't steer it alone, there's a few, we all have a hand on the, anyway. And then, I also am a part of the CTE Works Advisory Board. So, for about three years now, I've been helping Amanda Ratalick and that program sort of connect the needs of kids that are in high school, that are kind of focusing on biomed as a potential career, really kind of aligning them with credentials and certifications the kids can get, so they can leave high school and go to work as, let's say, you know, home health aide, or a certified nurse assistant. And so, as I started to think about where I would want to put all this spare time that I have, I thought, who better to serve than the next generation? District, and his teachers saved us and him by just making those programs available. So, I just can't think of a better reason, or a better group of folks to try and support than the folks doing that kind of work.
No, I completely agree. I think that we are so fortunate to be in Lincoln, to be part of Western Placer Unified School District. We have a lot of programs that are just not available in other communities.
Right.
And, you know, it's, the outpour of the community's support into the education system and our students as a whole is just tremendous. So, to be, you know, a big part of that is something that I'm sure is very exciting.
It, no, it is, and I'm excited to sort of join the team that's there. You know, I think most people know that Scott Lehman has put in for retirement, we'll have him through the end of the school year, and then Carrie will take over from there, and I'm anxious to see how we can build upon that. I mean, I know there's places where we can add emphasis, there's places where we can readjust focus and maybe even resources, but I'm anxious to sort of be a part of what comes next.
So, you and I had a great offline conversation, and I was able to get firsthand information as far as the direction that you'd really like to focus, your efforts once elected. So, can you share those areas of focus with our viewers that are watching?
Yeah, for sure. So, I'm a part of boards, and have been for some time. Some are advisory, some are, you know, executive and leadership boards. I'm familiar with the role, and I feel like, when you're on a board, you know, keeping the lights on and making sure that fiscal planning is done and so on, that's table stakes for me.
Sure.
I mean, in every meeting, you're going over budget, you're going over projections, that's just part of the job. It's not a small part of the job, but it's not the only thing that I think a board does. So, aside from doing those things, the district has good long-range planning, that's investing in the right people and so forth. I have three areas of focus. So, the first is technology. Like I said, I live in that space, right? So, I am constantly seeing actual companies choose different technology pathways, different places to invest in technology. I see them ripping out old systems, replacing them with cloud-based systems, and I feel like I have my finger on the pulse of that. I'm seeing an economy emerge from software as a service, and in cyber
Okay, well, okay.
Is it back on?
Yeah.
Okay, because that's perfect timing, right?
I know, right?
The need for technology, and how much we rely on it, as you just saw, is, I think, paramount. So, I definitely want to make sure that our district is positioning technology in front of our kids that helps them to be work-ready when they graduate. It's really important to me.
Absolutely.
And then, my second area of focus is, you know this about me, I like community.
Yes.
I'm a strong believer in coaching, I'm a strong believer in mentorship, and I want to see our community do all that it can, more than it is, to rally around kids, giving them some perspective as to careers that might be available for them, celebrating the idea that there are trades and crafts to learn that could afford you a phenomenal living, and even help you start your own business at one point. So, that's my second, is really to try and, is to try and marry the community better to the schools, and really task some of our local leaders to step up and mentor kids that have questions, and, you know, they want to learn more.
Right.
And then, my last one's real simple, I think you'll really like this one too. I want to pluck one student out of our school district every year and sponsor them through Leadership Lincoln.
That is tremendous.
Isn't that fun?
Absolutely, and, you know, I think that getting that younger perspective
Right.
within the class setting for Leadership Lincoln is, you know, really cutting edge. But on top of that, having them, those students be able to go back and share their experience
Yes, exactly.
You know, it's huge.
And we talked about this the other day, but like, I think most of us agree that we become the average of the five people we spend the most time with.
Right.
I just want to put the right five people in front of kids as often as we can, so that they have some perspective, like, you know, like we were laughing about this, like, "Well, I don't want to work Fridays." Well, dentists and dental hygienists and those folks, they don't work, and now you maybe get a kid thinking
... opportunity to know that, like we were talking about yesterday, that really, at any point in their lives, that they can take a little bit of a different direction and kind of reinvent themselves, but knowing that that's available to them, they don't have to have it all figured out, really alleviates pressure, but also gives a sense of real direction, seeing it in action in other people's lives.
I totally agree, and I tell young people when they ask, "Think about your life as you're writing a story."
Sure.
Like, just write a story, and sometimes, those chapters that sort of wander, those sections of your life that you sort of spent some, I don't know, some time figuring out how you felt about something, or surrounding yourself with a different type of person to get some, those are going to probably be some of the stories you retell in your 30s and 40s and 50s, and probably long after. As you know, when you hire people and you sit them down and go, "So, what are you about?" Sometimes, the stories they tell are what draw you to them, is, "Well, there was this one time, you know, I was backpacking," and you're like, "Oh, that's, I don't know." I mean, so, I do, I want, I want young people to know that some of the best lives, they're not a straight line from where you start to where you end.
Absolutely.
It's these big swings up and down, where even huge mistakes you've made, you look back and go, "Thank God I made that mistake, because if I hadn't, who knows, you know, if I would've followed the same path."
That's right. So, technology, community, and then also sponsoring students for leadership. I feel like those are all very, very good areas of focus that are really going to help, you know, kind of close the gap between these kids that are coming out of high school and college, and, you know, from the point where they're just kind of getting started to the point where they're actually showing up in civil service and things like that as well.
Yeah, yeah.
It's huge, it's huge.
And we do some of that now. Sometimes I talk, and I, I don't want it to sound as though I don't either know, or think that we have in the past done a good job with certain things.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just saying that those are going to be the areas that I want to uncover all I can about. I want to know, what programs have we started? What programs are currently in place? How do we better market these? One of my challenges with our district today is, I think they have a marketing problem. I mean, I see these great stories, you know, said on social media about some of the charter programs, and then I look back and I go, "Our school district does that. I know the teacher that does that. I've seen that program, but, you know, the district doesn't tell that story." Maybe because they can't, or maybe because, you know, marketing is not something they see as an essential spend, but that just makes me say, "Well, why can't they be a problem that the students solve?" I mean, I feel like it's time to give our students, more so than we have, problems to solve, and then resources to solve them, and then get out of their way. Because it's not, education is, I think it's preparing kids for a career that isn't there anymore. I mean, if you think about it, how much has education changed since it was put together and systemized at a government level?
Right.
It was really designed to educate people so that they could go to work in a factory, and they could stay at that job for 20 or 30 years, they could get a pension, they could retire. People don't do that nowadays. That's not a thing that is available nowadays, so I think it's more important to teach kids, "Hey, listen, data is easy. It's out there, it's everywhere. In fact, we have more of it than we know what to do with. The next economy, the next job is really about how to explain the data, and then make decisions based on that." So, analytics and insight is going to be massive, and the only way to teach that is through critical thinking. It's like, "Here's the problem, here's what we need as a desired solution, I don't know, you're going to have to figure it out." And then, let them pull together. I've seen programs like that, I think we need more of them.
Yeah.
I think we need to leverage some of our resources. We've got an airport out here, I wonder how many kids would join a program that might elicit them some sort of a pilot's license, or get them through ground school.
Sure.
We have an incredible farm. You can marry technology and agriculture very easily, and you might bring some folks in that thought agriculture was just digging in the dirt, and now they go, "Oh, I didn't realize Internet of Things and blockchain technology is all used in farming nowadays." So, my hope is just to say, "How is this conversation going to translate to the workplace?" Because that should be the goal of our whole system. It should be to get kids into a place where they can go out and they can make a living for themselves.
Right. It's funny that you mentioned that. So, I've kind of put that in place in my own life, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, I have, I have a lot of kids at home, and
Yes, you do.
So, you know, in years past, you know, school year starts, and we get all of this paperwork, and, you know, I've got this, this big old thick stack of emergency cards, and all of these different things, and I'm like, "Oh, when am I going to carve out two hours to fill all this out?"
Nope.
No, you know what? My children know their address, they know their phone numbers, I can provide the emergency contacts, they can fill out their own paperwork.
Yes, they can.
That was life-changing, just realizing that. They can make their own lunches.
Yeah.
All I have to do is buy the food, resources, right?
Well, and we've all grown up with the thing, you know, buy a man a fish, they eat for a day, teach a man to fish, they, you know. But how many of us, when it comes to parenting, I mean, we feel kind of bad, we're like, "Aw, I don't, you know, that looks hard." I mean, life is hard.
Right.
It's okay to let them struggle, that's, that's fine. I think if you lay out in front of them a challenge, that them completing a challenge just builds their confidence. If you think back, that's what it did for us.
Sure.
I think the things I'm most proud of are the problems I had to solve. It's not necessarily the class I finished, or the certificate I earned, it's more, "Hey, this was hard, no one else knew how to do it, and I had to sort it out." That's, I think, where I draw the most pride. And I'm telling you, I think that technology, and I've said this before, is like a flywheel, right? It was hard to get moving, and if you picture this big massive heavy wheel, it's really hard to get it to spin, but as it starts to spin, the weight of it, the size of it, make it spin faster and faster, and I'm telling you, technology right now is moving at a pace that very few people understand.
Right.
If your kids right now are learning how to code, there's a pretty good chance, by the time they're hireable, that job will be automated. And there's a lot of jobs like that. I read recently that Amazon has overtaken by revenue, they've made more money than the entire packaged goods industry, Mitzi, the industry. This is, many corporations, over decades, have built these massive businesses, and they've hired tens of thousands of people, and Amazon, a company that makes nothing,
Right.
just came up with a faster way to get it to you, and they displaced an entire industry.
Right.
That is astounding, and I think if our kids understand that that's the economy they're joining, it provides them resources. Like, when you were young and you wanted to make some extra money, like, what was it, paper route?
Right.
Babysitting, right? I mean, I bought a logo for our business from a kid that was 16 years old, and sold it to us on Fiverr.com.
That's right, yep.
I mean, these are, these are incredible resources at their fingertips, and I don't know how well we're challenging them, "Hey, in the next month, create a business."
Right.
Show me your plan. There's a fantastic program in many cities that incubate small businesses, I'd love to see us do that. We have the right people for it. This town really cares about people.
That's true.
We could absolutely connect something like that in a way that would be meaningful for a kid. I feel like I'm talking too much.
No, 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 it's all great.
Aw, was that my wife? It was probably my wife.
It was Jamie.
Oh, my gosh.
Richard Bussi, he's funny.
He is my favorite human.
Well, that's awkward, I thought I was your favorite.
Your second favorite, sorry, Richard, second favorite.
All right, all right.
We'll take it out in post.
Well, you know what, I really want to talk to you about your idea in regards to mentorship and things like that on a deeper level, but I do want to open up
Sure.
the conversation to our audience. Questions, comments? All right, well, while, I guess we've got some comments coming through, or some questions, but why don't you share with everybody your thoughts on having like a real workable mentor program, pairing kids up with business leaders in the community, and helping, you know, to facilitate that relationship so that kid can kind of see in real time what that career path looks like?
So, here's something I learned about our community. In March, when COVID scared us all, without question, we were all terrified, right? And, you remember, like, we started this little grassroots movement of saying, "How do we do a GoFundMe for local businesses?" Like, the first thing, maybe the second thing, our community just started to do was, "How do we protect those in our, in our, our local economy? How do we protect our businesses?" And, we came up with some fantastic ideas, and in that moment, that's when I saw the immense amount of collaboration that you can do with local business leaders. We have one of the most transparent police and fire chiefs I think I've ever met.
Absolutely.
And I've been in that industry for a super-long time. Very, he's very approachable, he's, he's very interested in, you know, being within the community. I think that's a rare find. I think what it takes is understanding maybe what specific interest area a kid might have.
Sure.
And then, asking, and I don't mean just the city of Lincoln, let's get outside as well, let's find out who in Roseville and Rockland, and even Auburn, might have an interest in, "Well, I run a business that does construction, or I, you know, I'm an electrician that started my own company." I think now, it's a matter of asking those folks for an actual time commitment.
Right.
And then, first, maybe a meet and greet, where folks can meet one another, and it's new, so I don't have all the answers, but I think you start with the question, and then you let the answer evolve from there. I have no issue, or no, no concerns about getting kids in a room that are saying, "Do you have questions about what it's like to be grown?" From other than your folks.
Right.
And then, maybe these kids, so I think you incentivize them with some sort of credit for school, or maybe a free meal, or something like that.
Yeah.
But you get them in the room, and you just start asking, letting them ask questions, and I think what you'll see is, real leaders love to lead, and they'll do it even if they aren't asked, even if it's annoying. They will tend to just sort of move that direction, and if you put them in a room full of people that are open and have questions, it'll, the work will do itself.
Well, see, and I'd love that, I would love, actually, for the last couple of years, I've been
I know.
interested in having a high school student help even with Lincoln Live, help with my, the business actually pays my bills, right?
Mm-hmm.
Real estate, and, I mean, marketing, all of these things that, you know, when I was studying for my real estate exam, there was no focus really on
Right.
marketing and how to build a business. There was, you know, we just wanted to pass the test and kind of get through that hurdle.
Right.
And then, it's like, it's go time, but you don't really know what to do and where to go.
Yeah.
And so, you've got to learn marketing and branding and all of these things, that I think that if somebody at the high school level really understood coming out of high school, you know, that could really open up a big opportunity for them to go in any direction, because you need that.
And what I think is interesting about that is, having had kids that go from student to functioning adult, it's like a switch, isn't it? It's like, "Okay, graduated, and now your life started. Oh, you're behind." I hate the idea of that. I would so much rather, because once they all grow up, then they're coming to you and saying, "I need a letter of reference, but I don't have a job, and I don't have any experience, so I'm not sure who to get a letter from." That, to me, we, we had those resources, we knew that this was going to be something they needed, and we sort of failed to put them in front of it, and that's part of the challenge. I feel like if you lay that out for them while they're in middle school, and help them see that season of their life.
Right.
I talk a lot about seasons, I'm a huge fan of thinking over your life in seasons, and not as one long single take. There are many, many scenes that sort of, so if we said early on, "Hey, listen, go and volunteer your time, here's 15 people, like Mitzi, that want help, that want help in things that are like, 'Hey, I want you to run my social media accounts for whatever it is, two months, six months, whatever.'"
Yep.
I'll bet you they do a better job, and it'll be like, "Why are you on Facebook? You need to be on Insta." And we're over there like, "Oh, I mean, of course we do, yeah, like, yeah, I read that in my magazine."
It's so true, it's, you know what, it is so true, you know, I just turned 38, and it cracks me up, because I actually have somebody running my Instagram right now, and I'm like, "Hey, show me how to check my messages." I don't know, I have zero clue on how to do any of that, I just know I need to be on it, and so I've hired somebody young to do that for me.
And there you go.
So, yeah.
And how about when we were in leadership, like, we built a dog park.
Yes.
McBean Bark Park for Life, right? Like, we should have gone to the high school and said, "We need a sign."
Right.
"We need help with fences." We, like, and, for some reason, those things seem to be siloed, our, the people that work in our community seem to be siloed from the people that are learning in our community, and I want to break some of those, those borders down. She's laughing, so I think Richard might have said something else.
I've got a lot to say.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to actually start, there's a question from Janet Boras.
Yeah.
Oh, hi Janet.
It's kind of a two-part question, really.
Okay.
So, the first part is, there are several people running against you
Yeah.
position, so what makes you unique and different? And it kind of goes into some of those running against you are former city council, school board members, and do you think that you need new eyes on the issues to bring new ideas in?
Those are great questions. So, what makes me unique and different? I think the technology perspective is pretty unique. I mean, have you ever used GoToMeeting?
Yes.
I sit on their partner advisory board.
Oh.
I've been to Utah and sat down with one of their founders, and had conversations about the way those kinds of people are seeing technology. So, I think that lens is fairly unique, and I'm not saying that every student in our school district's going to go on and do, you know, technology job.
Sure.
I'm just saying that whether you want to or not, your job is going to be affected by technology, and you should understand, A, where can I go to be away from it? Or B, how do I embrace it in a way that's organic to me? So, I think that's unique. My, my campaign manager, John Fett, says this about me, and I love it. He says, "I'm a consensus builder." And that really is who I am. I don't feel like I'm as much answers as I am questions, and I think you know that about me. I, we all have a perspective, we're all pretty much the hero of our own story, I really want to understand what's brought us all into the same room, and then you can start to find some sort of common ground, and I think that that isn't what politics is about, but I'm hoping that that's what it can be about. I feel like it'll represent more people if it involves more people. So, I think being a consensus builder, I'm not running on a platform of total disruption, I'm running on a platform of, "We've done some great things, we need some improvements, and I want to help get us from here to there," without trashing the work that's been done, because this district has done some great work. I have criticisms, but I also have a lot of admiration for the work done until now. As far as the fresh perspective, I mean, I think hard decisions were made 10 years ago, 12 years ago, and I think that this is a new season, because I like that word. So, I do think fresh perspectives are important. My lens, as I've said, comes from within the school district as well. I have worked with teachers, I have coached sports. I helped Amanda Ratalick build the first, that we know of in the country, CPR training program that's actually taught by students. So, we have student CPR instructors that train other students and staff in first aid CPR and hands-only CPR.
Wow.
I've, I've been able to do those kinds of projects within this district, because there's a really solid framework for adaptability and change.
Right.
So, yes, I do think it's time for fresh perspectives, and hopefully, others do as well, but it is, it's a noisy space. There's, there's five people running, myself included, for one spot. I don't know, I don't know how I got into the most contentious race that is in our local ballot, but somehow I did.
Good job.
I know, right? I love a challenge, I don't know, I don't know.
And how long will that term be?
It's a four-year term.
Okay.
And our, so the district is broken into essentially three areas, and Area 3 is And Area Three is the, is the seat that we're all competing for, and that covers the entirety of Lincoln.
Gotcha.
I love the questions, it's fun. I've had a couple people call me, and they, I mean, they have really good questions.
Yeah.
So it's fun.
Have you ever considered changing classes to be more realistic to modern society? Like, how to cook, how to deal with credit cards? So basically, just kind of-
Like a home ec, yeah.
Into what a home ec it really is now.
It is, it is a tiny bit shocking how little our kids knew about how to just be an adult human.
Right.
Even though they took trigonometry, and I don't know why, but maybe you're the same way. It's like, you think, these kids come home with these super thick books.
Yeah.
And they're going to be like, oh, you should do my taxes. And then they go, what are taxes? And you go, wait, what? So I, I do love the idea of that. These are, again, these are programs I think might be out there now, but maybe we're not leveraging them the way that we should. But life skills, to me, are essential. I mean, that's, you build confidence there, you know. I, like, our kids now, in high school or in college, are trying to build their credit, like, shame on us. We probably should have explained to them early on. Let's get you a credit card and all those kinds of things. So I would love to see that kind of work. I've been told that those programs are out there, but I don't think students are opting into them, and maybe that's something we could work on.
Well, and maybe they don't understand the importance either, you know. But they'll, they'll know when they're, you know, 25 and looking back.
And they go, oh, that was, that was hard, I didn't know how to do it. And nothing's really hard, it's just new.
Right.
So getting somebody to sort of like, you know, deconstructed, and, you know, it's not that complicated. I would also like to see some resources for parents, because I think as a parent, a lot of us are like, I don't want to tell people I don't understand that, that's super embarrassing.
Sure.
But if the, if the school would say, hey, these are some core life skills that we think that students should learn, maybe now that we've unlocked this whole distance learning thing, that could be something that maybe administrators and teachers could coach parents on.
Right.
Give them sort of some resources. Because I do think some of that should come from us. Like, I don't think it's fair for us just mail our kids to the school and go, I don't know, you figure it out. I'll feed them dinner when they get home.
Right.
Sure, we could probably help out. Yeah, maybe. Or they'll make dinner, because you've outsourced it, which is also smart.
There you go.
Besides dealing with the man crush that Richard had on you, what will the first thing you do be if you get elected?
Sorry, give me a sec with that. Okay, first of all, I'm a lifelong learner. So I will spend quite a bit of time understanding, where do we come from, where are we now?
Yeah.
What's the problem right outside the door? And what are the, you know, the boundaries of authority? Like, what, what can we influence, what can we change? Because I think what I've learned, and by the way, running for office, okay? This particular, I have learned so much about politics, and so much about why it's failing all of us. It's fascinating, honestly. I would encourage anybody, even if just an exercise to learn, take this thing on and find something you have some interest in,
Sure.
and just drive into it, and just see, you know, you know, if you don't want the position, I hope you don't get elected. But, but either way, just the process of running has been really interesting. So that's the first thing. I want to understand, you know, where have we been? Where do we hope to be going? What's the throughput? You know, where are we headed?
Yeah.
And then at that point, I, the first thing I'm going to do is take a hold of that leadership thing. Because honestly, I talked about that when we were in the class. I'm like, we should have a high school kid in here.
Right.
There's some phenomenal high school kids that if you just showed them, hey, here's a group full of adults trying to solve a problem, they'd be like, well, this sounds like a bunch of kids solved a problem. Yeah, it's very similar. I think right there, you, you start a career in some young person. So that, to me, is an easy one, and I think we start there.
Right.
And then from there, I definitely start thinking about, how do we get a solid mentorship program in place? I think it's so important.
Totally, totally. I'm, you know, I support that 110%, absolutely.
I mean, I look at the stuff that you've done, just on your own, like this show. Like, it fascinates me that no one asked you to do this. It was just a, and, and I don't think you make money. Do you have like a deal with NBC or?
No, NBC, yeah.
Hulu, maybe one of those?
No, no, none of those things.
But you felt like it should happen.
Yeah.
So you went out and did it, and that's the kind of stuff,